Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2022-2023 school year. Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the Clerks of Delaware Township, East Amwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard as shown on the agenda. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Here.
Dr. Charney?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Can we all rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, for the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So this is exciting time for us with the new school year beginning. We get to welcome our staff and families back and students, and we get to welcome new families and new students and new staff. So it's a really fun time. We had a phenomenal board retreat last month. We're going to talk a little bit more about it later in the agenda. But one thing we discussed was how important it is for us to emphasize our district mission statement. And so going forward, starting tonight, we're going to be reading our mission statement at every meeting just to remind everybody and ourselves what our mission of the district is. So here we go. Hundred and Central is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. While fostering curiosity and promoting wellness, we aspire to create powerful learning experiences, establish strong partnerships, and serve as contributing members of society. With that, we'll move into our approval of our July minutes. Could I have a motion for approval of the July 18 minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. We then have approval of the August 22 minutes. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mr. Richard?
Abstain, I was absent.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And just two more minutes to approve from our board retreat, the minutes from August 29. Motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And lastly, I need a motion in a second for approval of on the August 30 board retreat minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have two items of correspondence noted on the agenda for September. And with that, we'll move right into Dr. Moore's superintendent report.
Thank you. Thank you. I have to pause for a moment because I was reflecting on the mission statement. When we wrote that statement back in 2018, it was a very difficult time in the district when we wrote that statement. And the words were very powerful then, and I'm just reflecting tonight on those words and feeling some of that same feeling of power. But it comes through in a hopeful way for me today. And it's just striking to me. I just had to share that. We had a very, very strong opening to the school year. And I'm really, it's wonderful to see students and clubs and athletics and teachers and staff. Wonderful to see all of this activity back on campus and to be unfettered in terms of our public health considerations at this point. I don't want to call it normal. You've heard me talk about, you know, the sort of elusive normal that we're talking about these days, but it just feels wonderful is the best way that I can put it. There's a lot of hope in the air, as I said earlier. And students and staff have really adjusted well to some changes in practice, from the reintroduction of unit lunch to stricter guidelines around passes and cell phones. We're really in a strong spot. So I'm feeling very much hopeful today, and we're seeing that energy extending in student interactions with one another and in their assertions of who they are. It's hard to see after the rain today, which as much as I loved having the rain, it washed away a lot of the chalk flags that had been drawn as our beginnings of honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. So there were flags of Central and South American nations across the sidewalks on campus. A lot of them got washed out today, but there's more to come as teachers and staff and students work on a schedule of festivities to take us through the rest of that commemoration. I do have to discuss a couple of concerns tonight, and this is what's been weighing on me, concerns that have been brought to us that signal a need to continue to reiterate things like our mission statement. The first is teachers annually ask students to share about themselves in get-to-know-you questionnaires. This has been happening for many years, and many of those questionnaires in recent years have included questions about preferred pronouns and preferred names. And that's done to ensure, you know, that we have the most comfortable environment for students in our classroom and that we're expressing the most ardent movement toward belonging that we can for students of all gender identities. Surveys, like I said, have occurred for many years, and this year, however, for some reason, we've heard concerns from a small number of folks about asking those questions. At the same time, I've also received concerns about an advertisement that our Pulse Club ran on HCTV as part of our morning announcements. Pulse stands for People Understand, Love Solves Everything, and Pulse is designed for members of our LGBTQIA+ community and allies to find a comfortable space, to forge community, to find and spread belonging. And that advertisement went on TV in the morning announcements along with advertisements for many of our clubs, and it included some innocent displays of public affection. Pride imagery, rainbow flags, and some displays of public affection. You need to know that I support all of the efforts that our students and staff are taking to create a safe space and a community of belonging for all of our students. That's important for me to say, and I believe through the policy that they've passed, this policy 8100, our care policy, that our board supports the work that we do to provide safe space and belonging for all of our students. The policy is very specific in what it's for, in what it believes, and that's really important. And I find an opportunity, as we read the mission statement here, I find an opportunity to reiterate again what we're for. We're for all students having access to the opportunities that are expressed and promised through our mission statement. That's what we're for. We're for breaking down the barriers that get in the way of students and people's ability to reach those promises, each and every student. Now, I pointed out last month, and I need to point it out again, I've got 30 years in this profession. I have a history degree. I have advanced degrees in education. I've done my research on these things, and I have to tell you that our profession as educators was designed to do what our mission statement says. Our mission statement's not innovative. That's what schools in America were designed to do. That's what's at the root of public education. The philosophers who built public education in America said that's what we ought to do, and they drank from the same spring that people drank from as they founded our nation. United we stand. You know, so we, and we see this. We see this. This isn't a political thing either. We see in party platforms going back 100, 150 years, Democrat, Republican, whatever you see, you see two things. You see schools take care of people who need help and bring them along so that they can contribute, and schools stay free of the influences that would take them away from that mission, particularly sectarian influences, undue religious influences on public schools. That's in our founding. And again, it's the same spring from which the founding of our nation has its roots. One Republican Party platform from the 19th century, I believe, early 20th century, talks about schools as being the bulwark of education, that it's our job to prepare students not only to move our solutions forward, but to protect what we do here in this effort to make sure that everybody belongs. If everybody's going to belong, we have to see and value the differences that everybody brings to the table. There's no blindness that serves us. There's no color blindness, no blindness to gender or sexual identity, no blindness to socioeconomic status, to religion, to anything. All of that is part of who we are, and schools have to empower all of that. That's written into our mission. I think if you believe that to be un-American, I find that difficult. I thinking if you believe that to be un-American, and I've been accused of that being un-American, that you're drinking from something shallower and I would dare say poisonous. And when you spit that out of your mouth, I think it sounds a lot like hate and disregard. And I would just love to hear more about what people are for. I think we can find common ground in what people are for. If all people want to talk about is what we're against, don't do this, don't do that. If all we want to talk about is what we're against, then I fear that the students here, and I see lots of students here tonight, I feel that the students here are just going to hear that they're not for anything. I think kids need to hear what we're all for. So that invitation stands, to join us, you know, to join us in being for things for our students. And if you need to tell us, you know, but you need to tell us what you're actually for. You know, it can't all be about big vague words, and it can't be all about things that you disagree with. What are you for? What are you for? Because we can find common ground there and work together. And you have to be specific. In our board policy, we've been specific about what this district is for. We've been specific in meetings about what we think about books in the library, what we think about inclusive curriculum, what we think about clubs and other activities that provide safe spaces. Be specific about what you're for is what I ask folks who disagree with this work to be with us. And I, again, if the students here are not hearing what they need to hear from folks, keep asking. Keep asking us to be clearer about what we're for, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure you realize that we're for you. Let me just take a breath. Okay. I'm pleased to introduce a few students to you tonight. Students, these students represent a team that's going to be working with us and with you to design a new structure for student representation to the board. Now, I think some of them are here tonight, so I'm going to ask them to just sort of raise their hands as I call them out. Lauren Easley, 12th grader on student council, are you here? There's Lauren right there. Raise your hand, really tall Lauren. There's Lauren. There's Lauren. Let's go. Sweitha Fornell, I saw Sweitha come in. She's in the back. Sweitha, go ahead. Raise your hands. There she is. 10th grader on class council, and Laurel Hanahan, who is our 2023 vice president, is right over there. We have two others that I was fortunate, Mrs. Hughes and I were fortunate to meet with this morning, two others. Kelly Rice, who is our 2024 class president, and Raina Taylor, who is our 2023 class president. They were unable to join us tonight, but they joined us today to begin to talk about what student representation to the Board of Education ought to look like. Now, we'll have other students joining that effort, not only as these five branch out and start to bring people in, but these are students from student government. Our ninth graders haven't even really been settled into student government yet, so we'll need representatives from that class. They're going to be coming on board as well. And the purpose of this is to design, like I said, the structure for student representation. This is a state requirement for us this year, that there have to be student representatives to the Board of Education. But we don't want to just comply with what that could be, having a student sit at the end of the table and just report. We want that to be a robust exchange of information. And we've already talked today with the folks who are tasked now with designing this with us. We've already talked about mission number one, which is how do we reach into every corner of our student community to make sure that we're hearing and have representation from everyone? So this effort will grow and grow and grow. They will continue to update us as we go through at our meetings over the next couple of months. And then in the winter, we hope to then unveil, here's where we are with student representation, and we'll invite some students to begin sitting at the table with us and working with all of you in some really important governance opportunities. So we'll keep you updated. Following up from our last meeting, I also want to announce that we've gathered, or follow-up, rather, we've gathered all of our notes and all of the data from Spring's Climate and Culture Survey of students. We talked about that several times here in these meetings. Tonight, an email's going out to the community and to the staff to share a link to a webpage where we've put everything. So all of the findings that we've talked about, all of the specific results from all of those questions, it's all going to be on that webpage. And we'll continue to add to that as our survey activities and our other activities aimed at climate and culture continue to move forward. I have two really incredible items to share tonight about some wonderful news from some of our students and what they've been able to accomplish over the, over the spring and into this school year. We've only been running our AP Capstone program for a few years. You all heard me in one of my updates recently talk about our AP Capstone program. AP Capstone is a combination of AP Seminar and AP Research. And it's not just an AP test at the end of those two courses. Those students do very big papers, they do presentations, they do a lot of high-level research, college level and even post-baccalaureate level research. And at the end of it, if they've done a good job, they get the AP Capstone diploma. We had 10 students last year receive that diploma. That's amazing to have that many. That's an incredibly, that's an enormous number. So we're very proud of that program, and it's been a program that's only been in place for a couple of years. Also extremely pleased tonight to announce that this year we've continued to increase the number of students taking dual enrollment courses, that's courses that are receiving college credit while they're here at Central. Curriculum Director Jessica Cangelosi-Hade, I saw her out here somewhere. There she is. She's been working at that since, and her team, since her time began here a few years ago to expand those programs. When she began, we had 54 students in dual enrollment. That then went up to 190, and this year we're up at roughly 250 students enrolled in dual enrollment courses. So that's excellent, excellent stuff. So I want to congratulate all of our students for taking on that challenge and also the work of our supervisors, teachers, and Ms. Cangelosi-Hade for that massive expansion and opportunity for students. So thank you for that. Now, I have a few more organizational and other items to go through, but before that, we do have a presentation tonight from Mr. Dan Twizzler, who is our Health and Physical Education Department supervisor. In our retreat last month, we talked about our supervisors this year focusing their presentations on what's new in their departments and also discussing how they've been working on increasing student engagement and also having positive impacts on school culture by closing gaps and providing education relevant to each of our students. So Mr. Twizzler is the next one up tonight to give us some thoughts and some news about health and PE. You all have a PDF if you want to stay put. If you do want to move down, you can see it on the screen. The screen's going to come down while we get set up. Here it comes. So, Mr. Twizzler, you can kind of come up and get yourself set up as well.
All right. Thank you so much. So I really just want to give a little bit of a quick overview about what's been going on in health and PE and give you a little bit of a sample of some of the programs that we have. So really, probably the biggest reason to be here right now is the most recent changes to the NJSLS. There was an update in 2016 for math and English. All the other subjects got an update in 2020. As I'm sure you can imagine, there were some complications in 2020 that caused that to be a slower rollout, so we don't actually go live with these standards until now. Dr. Moore mentioned a little bit earlier about what are we for? And one of the things that they did when they restructured these standards is really to try and sift it down to really have core three goals as to what they're looking for. And all of them focused on the idea of student wellness, student safety, and student physical activity. So although there's been a lot of changes to these standards, they all have really kind of focused in on those three main driving facts. This summer, we've spent a lot of time looking at those standards and trying to think about how we could capture what we were already doing very well in these programs and address these new standards at the same time. It really did not have as big of an impact at the high school level as it had in the lower grades. What we saw was a removal of the CPR program in our freshman health unit. We saw that it was focused more on activity, which I'm going to go into in a little bit more detail in the later slides, and less on actual sports. We're no longer testing on the rules of volleyball or what have you. And we also saw the introduction, the introduction of the practice standards. Now, the practice standards are something that the state has been growing in a lot of their programs. Math got it in 2016. And it's great to see these overarching ideas that could be applied to every single health and PE lesson. All these are standards that we're looking to accomplish with our students, and sometimes they're tied to a specific lesson. Sometimes it's just a broad idea of what we should be working on on any given day. These are great, too, because they really address a lot of what we're talking about with our mission statement for the school, of trying to have that attention to personal health, emotional, social, and physical well-being. These are things that are really interwoven through everything that health and PE is working on. So for the specific curriculum changes, we adopted the standards, but this was more than just a response to the state. We also talked to students, sometimes in individual times, sometimes in small groups, to be able to hear their feedback about our programs and how we can improve things. It also came as a byproduct of the staff going through PD. We have a staff member who is pursuing advanced coursework, and he adopted a program where the freshmen get a chance to choose which activity they work on in class. So addressing that idea of individualization in class and that idea of students having a little bit more choice in their education, that's being enacted right now on freshman level. In the upper grades in this building, in the 1112, we had two teachers that got certified by the Red Cross and CPR, and they're actually able to certify students in turn. So our programs are growing and being able to offer the things that our students are interested in to be able to help them be active members of society. At the same time, as the newest member of the department, I had the opportunity to be able to go to some conferences, to be able to talk to folks around the state as to what they're doing with their programs to try and capture best practices across the board. Some of that is going to be included this Friday in our in-service. We have a speaker coming in to be able to work with the PE teachers on changes to the curriculum and being able to adapt what the standards look like and what activities look like, including actually some time to be able to look at their materials to be able to have this input from an advanced university. One such example of what we're doing in health and PE could be seen in Project Adventure. Project Adventure, normally we think about as the high ropes course and the activities that we have, these wonderful things on campus that our students are able to explore, some pretty advanced opportunities. And here we have our staff get certified just to be able to offer these things. But in addition to the high ropes course and being able to actually put on a helmet and a belay up into the air, the Project Adventure has also been incorporated in a lot of our other classes as well. We've taken some of those activities and worked them into our regular PE classes throughout the year. Some of those activities address the idea of wellness. It's an opportunity for students to be able to collaborate with each other, to be able to problem solve, to be able to use teamwork, to be able to have their phone be down and still communicate to another human being. It really addresses this idea that we're looking for in our mission statement of students being well-rounded, and they're getting that through these activities. And I can tell you, if you've watched students in a gym try and figure out how to use a couple of mats to be able to work together to get across the gym, it's really inspiring to see the way that they can collaborate with each other and they can problem solve in real time to be able to accomplish these things. I invite you to come in and take a look at these classes because they're not the same PE classes that you probably recall from when you were in high school. We have these kids really working well together and collaborating to be able to accomplish tasks. We also have teachers that are having our students go through mindfulness activities, guided meditations at the start of class to be able to refocus a little bit and be able to deal with all the pressures that have been coming from the pandemic, to kind of re-center before they get into their activities. We also have partnerships happening. Our teachers that are certified in Project Adventure go through an actual training program where they get to work with people around the nation, and it's great for them to be able to network and branch out beyond our walls. We have a member of Project Adventure coming in next week to be able to certify our coursework. So it's still that connection to that program and be able to see it at larger. And I mentioned the activities in all the other PE classes. Powerful Learning also addresses that by the idea that students take ownership. It's not just them trying to figure out how many push-ups they can do in a minute. We're not doing the presidential challenge anymore where they're trying to accomplish just this rope calistics. Instead, it's this idea of the students taking ownership to try and figure out how they're going to collaborate in that group, which student's going to step forward and lead their team to be able to accomplish the task that they're trying to figure out. Well, I meant to hit these earlier. This is a picture of just the students working together to try and accomplish tasks, and I'd be remiss if I did not include Mr. Klein up on the ropes course, showing that it's another way that we do the partnership activities. Staff, you're welcome to come join. They do accept volunteers to be able to come in, and the students really love that, to be able to see that they're part of this grander school community. Another program that I just want to mention before I wrap up is our Option 2 program. Our Option 2 program has seen a significant expansion. Last year, there was only about three or four students that were part of this program. We broadened the acceptance of who we'd let into the program, including juniors, including students that were in a single varsity sport instead of being a two varsity sport athlete, and we saw the population boom. We're now running five full sections of almost 125 students in this class. So the students are really making it clear that this is something that they're interested in. They're looking to take a little bit more ownership in their education. This program offers the students the opportunity to lift during the school day. It offers the opportunity for them to be able to have an off day during the school day and be able to accommodate, pardon me, be able to compensate for the fact that they're logging long hours here after school. One thing we're looking to do with adapting the course is to be able to change the name of the course, because although it's titled Option 2, the students are still taking it during the school day. So we're looking at the idea of maybe exploring the idea of calling it an independent study or be able to explore the idea of personalized path as to how they get there. And one offshoot of that that we're considering is what if the students took this class and acted as leaders for the other PE classes, to be able to run drills in the beginning or be able to talk to the students about these different activities that they're doing to broaden their learning?
So hang out there for one second, Mr. Twizzler, in case anybody has any questions, but I just want to focus just some attention on, well, first, I think that might be one of the most creative ways that I've ever seen anybody deal with sort of the need to deal, you know, student identities and the smiley faces that was good. But also just health and PE, like all of our departments, and you'll probably hear this again and again this year, taking the opportunity to capitalize on the fact that people are together and that there's leadership to be learned, there's collaboration and relationship to be learned, and just how we bake that into the activities that we're doing. And health and PE was poised in a big way and also poised in a way to really respond to student needs for relevant health and life education. I think one of the lessons that I came out of our conversations about books last winter, that was the winter, right? February, yes, last winter, we talked about books quite a bit, and it struck me that, you know, there's a lot of reliance on what's in our media center, and there ought to be, and those things are thankfully available for our kids, but are we finding that relevance in all of our classes as well? And I applaud the work that our teachers are doing and that you're doing there to bring out that relevance for all of our students in life education. So thank you. So thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twizzler? Go ahead, Mr. Rishard.
I just have a general comment to make, and this is to the rest of the board. If you haven't had a chance to do so, if you Google 2020 New Jersey Student Learning Standards in Health and Phys Ed, they're all there for us to look at, and they're really quite remarkably put together with, by the end of grade two, end of grade five, end of grade eight, and end of grade 12, milestones for students to achieve in all the different areas. So if you haven't had a chance to look at this, and this is public information, too, I would highly suggest that you visit the Department of Education's website and take a look at these standards.
Dr. Rishard?
Thank you for the presentation. Presentation, it was very informative. I do have a question on the Option Two. What's the typical student that enrolls in the Option Two? And what do you see their motivation in picking the Option Two?
Sure. So the typical Option Two student is a student that takes sports very seriously. It's either going to be a student that's a two varsity sport athlete or a single varsity sport athlete who is very committed to that sport year-round. We do have some students that are involved in that that are looking to be Olympians. We have other students that are just particularly fond of their particular sport, and they're looking to use that as an avenue towards college. The purpose of the class is really a way to be able to address the needs of that student within the school day. So whether it's a matter of their lifting, to be able to find time to be able to do that, whether it's time to work on the nutrition of these students that are taking their sport very seriously, or whether it's an opportunity to just have a down day once a month where they can get a chance to be able to catch up on some of the schoolwork from other materials that they're missing because they're so heavily involved in our sports.
And so what are the requirements for the Option Two? Do they take a final exam, midterm? Do they have a project? How do you maneuver that piece of the curriculum?
Sure. There's a project involved because they go through the same health curriculum that they would for their grade level. So of our five sections of Option Two, three of them are senior-based, two of them are junior-based. They're going through the full health curriculum for their grade level. They're just doing it spread out throughout the year instead of doing it condensed into one marking period.
Thank you very much.
And I'll add to that, too. Health and PE is one of, well, gosh, it's the only content area, right, that has a seat time requirement of 150 minutes per week? So they're logging that time as well in their participation in their sports, either in season or outside of school if they're devoted to it year-round. Do we have, Mr. Twizzler, we've had conversation, do we have any students who are engaged in high-level sports that we don't offer in the school but who are able to participate in Option Two? Any sports that are fully taking place outside of school?
I believe we have one student who's involved in some sort of winter sport for the Olympics, but I'm not 100% certain of that. I know that they were exploring the idea of it, but I don't know if they made it into the course or they will continue to be interested in it. One hiccup of our Option Two program is that because it's a year-long PE course, it does also cause some complications with scheduling.
Yes, that's true, because we schedule, you know, the health and PE in our block schedule. Well, thank you. Any more questions for Mr.? Go ahead, Mrs. O'Donnell.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Really, really interested to hear about, you know, what the curriculum is doing and engaging students in, and not looking for a specific answer in the moment to put you on the spot, but just thinking about what kinds of opportunities, you know, related to this are going into like Project Trust or Aspire or other programs where students might not be as engaged in this type of opportunity. And we know Central has such an impressive, high-level and active sports community, thinking about going forward, what kind of opportunities we might create that aren't, you know, varsity or aren't, you know, some outlets for students who would like to participate but aren't perhaps performing at that level. Just something to think about.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Others, and I'll share a thought in relation to that as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Twizzler. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I think as we pursue really deep personalization for students, and Candelosi Hade and I and Dr. Webb and Mr. Brandt, we've been having lots of conversations about how we begin to expand from where we've run pilot programs on that sort of personalization to really, how can we get to a scale and a structure where we're blowing the doors off of that across all of our departments? And everything I've talked about tonight, whether it was the capstone opportunity, the AP capstone opportunity, or dual enrollment, or the kinds of Option Two opportunities you have there, I think we're developing a really interesting toolbox around how we offer students compelling activities in each department area that aren't necessarily just course-driven. And I think that's going to be important to us as we continue to build out personalization for students, but we have to take it step by step because there's a lot of reinvention and a lot of new stuff to do there. Technology will play a role in that. Connections with outside organizations will play a role in that, so you'll hear more and more about that as we go forward. So thank you for those thoughts. All right, some last little bits and pieces. The agenda has a couple of organizational items. The first is our health-related closure plan. That's something we have to provide to the state each year. So we have to update it each year against a checklist that they provide. It's very prescriptive about what they want in it. And the last time, we approved that last September, I believe, and it goes back to March of 2020 when we first filed those plans with the onset of COVID. But we're required to approve that each year. So with your approval tonight, we'll post that plan on our website and we'll also submit it to the state for review. If they need us to make any changes, and it's possible that they will need us to make changes, then I've got to bring it before you again for approval again. So if you see it again, that just means the state asked us to expand on this or cut back on that. We also have some bylaws and, let's see, what we have there. We have policy first reading and some abolished policies on second read. We've talked about the abolished policies. Those are travel expenses and compensation expenses policies that have been in our manual for some time. They've been swallowed up since by a unified sort of travel expenses policy. And we have a policy on first read, which is the Board of Education Website Accessibility Policy. Mrs. Tucker's been working with our website vendor to ensure, and it all looks good, that everything that currently comes through on our website platform is compatible with all of the items in that policy, so we're in good shape there. Later on this evening, Mrs. Hughes will share a bit about the goals that have come out of our retreat discussions. You all have a copy of the draft of the goals at your seat, and there's a pile of them there on the stage as well. And lastly, just a reminder, this week, we have Start Strong assessments from the state. That's a difficult assessment to administer. We don't get a lot of good data from it. We've tried to work with the state to see if it was necessary this year, but because we don't get good data from it, we have to continue to offer our own assessment programs, our Linkit and our PSAT programs for students. So we do find ourselves having to do quite a bit of testing, unfortunately. We also have our first back-to-school night this week on Thursday night right here on campus, and then Friday, of course, will be a day off for students as staff engage in professional development, and then we're off on Monday as well. And with that, thank you all. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So before we head into our first residence forum, I thought tonight would be a good time to review our policy on public comment. I know we have a lot of new families, we might have some new community members, some new students, so I thought it made sense at the beginning of the school year just to sort of refresh everybody's recollection or explain for the first time to some folks what our policy is. We believe it's crucial to hear from the community. So we welcome the community, we welcome the community public comments. We want to take any specific concerns or questions seriously, but we may need time to process and research issues and respond or direct you to the proper staff member. As much as we're here to listen, this isn't a discussion when you come up for public comment, it is an opportunity to give a comment, and if there is a need to respond, we will get back to you or have a staff member get back to you. It's also important to remember that under federal and state privacy laws, we can't speak about any students' personal issues, any staff issues, nor can we discuss specifics of school security matters. From a process standpoint, very quickly, we have two residence forums. The first one is action items on the agenda, meaning items that the board is going to vote on tonight. The second, which comes later in the evening, is for general comments, not necessarily tied to anything on the agenda. Our policy grants each speaker up to five minutes to speak, with the entirety of public comment being 30 minutes. I do have the discretion to modify those time limits, and if you've been here before, you've seen if we've had a large crowd, with the permission of the rest of the board, we have decreased five minutes to three minutes just to give more people the opportunity to be heard. And we've also extended the 30-minute time limit so that more voices could be heard. But generally speaking, it's up to five minutes. You will get a little alarm notification when there's one minute remaining just to give you the indication to start wrapping up, and we ask that when your time is up, that you please just sit down and allow the next person to speak so that we could have as many people who'd like to comment come up to the mic. The other thing I want to mention, a lot of people don't know, if you can't make a meeting, if you email the board, it's the same as sort of coming to the meeting and speaking to the board. So you're always welcome to email us. All of our emails are on the BOE webpage of the district website, so you're also welcome to email any one of us at any time. If you do choose to speak tonight or any other night, we just ask you to step to the mic, sign in, there should be a sign-in sheet, state your name and municipality of residence for the record. Our policy requires that you direct all comments to the board or me individually. I will ask that you not direct your comments to an individual board member, to Dr. Moore, a staff member, or the audience. Comments are really intended to be directed to the board. Now, the part that's personally most important to me, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students, that board members and community members can disagree without being disrespectful, and we can have a discourse in a civil and respectful manner. This is something that's really, really important to the board. You've heard me speak about it before if you've been to these meetings. So we ask that if you do speak, that you please just be courteous and respectful, whether you agree or disagree with decisions that the board has made. I'm confident that if any of our students come to speak, they will follow these guidelines as well and positively demonstrate what a red devil is and will make us proud. Hunter and Central, you've heard us say it time and time again, we strive to be a place of kindness and respect, and we are going to model that behavior here at our meetings. So with that being said, if there is anyone interested in speaking at our first residence forum for any items on the agenda, please step up to the mic and sign in. Okay, it doesn't look like anybody's here to speak on action items, so we will come back to the second residence forum later if anybody has general comments. With that, we will now move to the organizational items that Dr. Moore referenced. The first is, we need a motion to improve the health-related closure plan, and a second?
So moved.
Second.
So any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to approve Policy 1511, Board of Education Website Accessibility?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And lastly, can I have a motion to abolish bylaws 147 and 147A?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. With that, we will move into committee reports. Mr. Richard, can you please report on student life and programs?
Yes, the Student Life and Program Committee met on September 7. The agenda and the minutes are available on board docs, and I'm assuming everyone read those minutes, so I don't have to go through a great deal of detail. So on the agenda tonight for action, our first item is a North Hunter and Voorhees Regional High School District student who will be attending Hunter and Central for our ELL program. Ms. Candelosi Hade reviewed the agreement with North Hunter and Voorhees, and that district will be responsible for tuition and transportation. Item two, tuition and transportation for a special ed student, this is a continuing placement for that student. Item three, this abolishes policies in the first reading. Ms. Candelosi Hade reviewed the abolished policies. The policies are briefly as follows. Number one, the first one is 2415.01, academic standards, academic assessments, and accountability is being abolished because the legal requirements for accountability have been accounted for and revised in Policy 2415. Policy 2432, school-sponsored publication, is being abolished. That is addressed in the revised Policy 5722. Policy 5465, early graduation is being abolished because the requirements for early graduation have been incorporated into Policy 5460 on high school graduation. Policy 8464 on missing children is being abolished because the requirements have been adopted as part of Policy 8462, reporting potentially missing or abused children. 1.4, these are policies for second reading. These policies were reviewed previous month during the first reading, and the first one is the Every Student Succeeds Act, which has been revised to align with updated language from legislation. Policy 2415.04 is the district-wide parent and family engagement had been revised to include parent and family engagement, yes, formally addressed parent involvement, but it did not specify the engagement of families interviewing data and programming as it pertains to Title I programs and funding. Policy 5517, school district issued student identification cards, requires schools to have the telephone number of the New Jersey Student Prevention Hotline, Suicide Prevention Hotline. Policy 5722, student journalism has been revised to reflect updated legislation. New statutes include definitions, indicates a student journalist has the right to exercise freedom of speech and of the press in school-sponsored media. 1.5, that we're voting on tonight, is to approve the dance team overnight trip. Ms. Candelosi Hade provided information about the proposed dance trip to Orlando, the Universal Dance Association's National Dance Team Championships. Costs of the trip will be approximately $1,200 per student, paid for by fundraising and the student family. So with that, I would like to move 1.1 through 1.5 for approval tonight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just want to share one little bit about the policy on school district issued student identification cards. I might have said this at our last meeting, but I wanted to bring it up again quickly. We have been carrying, we have a lot of resources with crisis lines and hotlines for our students. What took us a little bit by surprise was that the law that necessitated this policy actually identified a specific number that we had to put on our cards. So our cards had been printed already, so we did up stickers, so all of our students have stickers on the backs of their cards with that number, but as we go into next year's printing, we'll make sure we'll put that very specific number printed permanently on the back of our ID cards. But I just wanted to let you know that we were in compliance, but it came a little bit late for us to do it fully, so, but they do have the sticker on the back of their cards.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Nichol, can we have an update on ONT, please?
Yes, Operation Transportation met on Tuesday, September 6. We discussed several construction projects ongoing and upcoming. A few items on the agenda that I want to highlight, we're looking to approve our 2223 bus stops and routes for the transportation director. Looking to approve application of a $5,000 grant from Special Olympics to fund our 2223 Unified Sports Program. We have some monies going back into capital reserve, one for the generator project and one for the new field lighting for over $140,000. And we're looking to abolish on second reading a few, the expenses for travel, which is kind of similar to the bylaws we had in the organizational items. These are being combined into a new policy, number 6471, for school district travel. With that, I'd like to move items H1 through H9.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I will point out, and to Mrs. O'Donnell's question earlier, our Unified Sports Program is one that is an example of the kind of program you're talking about in terms of reaching in to various communities in our school to bring that kind of opportunity to students. So I think a lot of our job moving forward is how we string all of this stuff together into a coherent approach that fully and robustly meets our mission. We have a lot of programs that do it, and I think a lot of it now is sort of pulling the strings tighter so that it all comes together, but the unified program is a good example.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Any other comments? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, Personnel Committee update, please?
Yes, we, the Personnel Committee met last week on Wednesday, and the minutes have been circulated to the board for feedback, and so I will hit the highlights rather than go through every detail. First of all, the rates that are quoted on your agenda reflect the new contract that we have entered into and have been properly updated. As you can see, some of the items, we have a retirement, Sally Market, special ed teacher, 22 years, and I'd like to thank her for a wonderful service to the district as she moves We have some resignations, appointment recent, contractual appointments, a couple of paraprofessionals, substitute teachers. As we whip through this, we have, all these are normal categories. Every month, we're going to have some people as we adjust the district to our needs, hourly appointments and contractual appointments, special services supervisors and services in the AM and PM. These are people that have been appointed to these, had contractual rates, and we're going to, we have a number of professional development assignments, advisors, and believe it or not, even though we're down to, we're coming up to about 16 items, this is one of the shortest agendas the Personnel Committee has had. Coaches, student teachers, which I love to see, and policy on a second reading is professional responsibility policy, and, let's see, the last is abolish policy for highly qualified teachers. I don't know, Dr. Moore, do you want to just address what that is and why we're dumping it when it says highly qualified, you know? Okay, good, all right. And finally, amendments, and that is it. So I'd like to have a motion to move items 1 through 16, Personnel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments before Dr. Moore speaks?
Yeah, I just wanted to also ask Dr. Moore to give us an update with regards to our staffing. As most of us know, the news has been filled with reports of teacher shortages around the nation. I have a feeling that Hunterdon Central is doing very well in spite of that, and I'd like Dr. Moore to give us an update with regards to where we are.
Yep, I will certainly. Thank you. Anything else?
Anything else? Dr. Moore?
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Richard. Before, there are a couple of policy things that I wanted to talk about really quickly, the one that you're bringing up, one of them, Mr. Robertson, but the, Davidson, sorry, Rob Richard's question about the staffing. We find ourselves in a very strong position compared to a lot of the schools that my colleagues run across the state, and there are some horror stories out there about open positions that haven't yet been filled, classes that don't yet have teachers, and all kinds of situations. I don't mean to suggest that we aren't having our difficulties, and I know the people who are in the audience and who are hearing me who work day in and day out on those difficulties are probably going, well, Jeff, I have some tough times with some of this stuff, and some of those areas, paraprofessionals, substitute teachers, bus drivers, these are areas where all districts are struggling. When I look out at the breadth of the operation, though, I am just nothing but blessed and fortunate for what we've been able to maintain through the pandemic. I'm very pleased that we've been able to open this year on a really strong footing without scrambling as much as a lot of my colleagues' districts to cover holes in their staffing. So right now, we're in very, very good shape and anticipate that that will continue. So we're in a wonderful position there. On the policies, abolish this policy second reading, the highly qualified teacher policy, that's a very old policy that goes all the way back to the NCLB program from the early 2000s. And the NCLB program from Washington, D.C., required us to show against certain kinds of matrices and certain kinds of rules that every one of our teachers met the definition of a highly qualified teacher underneath that law from the early 2000s. That law has since evolved several times, and the abolishment of this policy never caught up with that. So we have other ways through the state and through other avenues that we have to show that all of our teachers and all of our staff are properly certificated for the jobs that they've been assigned to. That's baked into a lot of the work that we do with the Department of Education now, so we don't need this separate policy that refers back to the NCLB law from the early 2000s. So as we've pruned our policy manual in several different waves over the years, this particular one just sort of hit out in the, hit out and never got addressed. The other thing I want to point out is, you might have noticed, if you were looking closely, I know I've mentioned with the board, that there were policies on staff dress and grooming that were introduced for a first read last month. After some conversation with staff and looking at how prescriptive those policies were, I pulled those from the agenda for second read because I wanted to engage staff in some better discussions about dress code policies and grooming policies that made sense. The policies that were on the agenda in last month for first read, some were very prescriptive, you know, this kind of clothing is forbidden, that kind of clothing, and they were also speaking about some other things that didn't necessarily relate to dress and grooming. So I wanted to pull those out and work with the staff on better policies that really reflected our trust in their professionalism to make choices about their wardrobe without being so specific. One of those policies was more specific even than I think some of the dress code stuff that we have for students, you know, so I wanted to express some more trust in the professionalism of our staff and work with them to come up with a policy that makes sense. So those are a couple of things that I wanted to mention for you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Any other comments? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Donnell, do you have an update for Racism Equity Diversity Committee?
I do, I do. I'll be brief. We don't have anything to move tonight. The Racism Equity Diversity Committee met on September 12 and discussed a few topics such as prior work and proposed continuation on policy revision to align to the new care policy, 8100. I'm fogging up here. Also, we talked more about student representation to the board and how to facilitate that with students and how that representation, what it needs to look like, and how it needs to really reach all facets and pockets of the Hunterdon Central community for representation. And we also talked about the need to ensure connection to the community organizations and opportunities for leadership and training for the student representatives that we'll be working with, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on the Red Committee? Okay, we're going to move into additional board business. I have a few comments just about the retreat and our goals. Does anybody else have anything to add before I take a few minutes? Nope, okay. So as I mentioned earlier, we had a fabulous two-day board retreat at the end of August, which was facilitated by Judith Wilson, who did a great job just really getting us talking about really important issues. Student rep to the board that we've talked a lot about tonight, what our board structure should look like, how to become more efficient board, a more effective board, what new board member orientation maybe should look like. And we also had a lot of discussion about our board and district goals for this upcoming year. And so we came up with two main goals for the district. They were shared with the board last week. They've been printed out and handed to everybody. They're up here with the agenda as well, and I just wanted to speak very briefly. They're sort of self-explanatory, but one of the primary board goals, district goals for the board this year is to continue, you know, to strive for physical and emotional wellness for all of our students. And this is directly related to our spring climate and culture survey. So we will continue to work towards implementing action plans resulting from what we heard from our kids in that climate and culture survey. So that is formalized in our first goal. This is a priority for the board, and again, the physical and emotional well-being and health of our students is of utmost priority. Our second main goal, and these are two big goals, so we kept it to two. There's a lot of work to be done in both areas. We continue to work in diversity and inclusion. Our main goal this year is to implement the roadmaps that we created in our care policy, which was adopted earlier this year. This also remains the highest of priorities for the board, and if we learned anything from the process of drafting our equity policy is that this work is never done. So we will continue to work on our diversity, equity, inclusion work, specifically implementing the care policy and all that comes with that. We also came up with a couple of board governance goals, which is new to us, I think, in drafting it this way. Again, in an attempt to become a more efficient, effective board, we came up with three goals just to keep the board engaged, to keep the board on track, and to work most effectively. So you'll see those board governance goals there as well. One thing I want to mention, because I don't think we've had a meeting since, is coming out of the retreat, one of the board's structural changes we've made is we have decided, and I think Dr. Moore alluded to it in the last meeting, to stick with one meeting a month. So we are eliminating going forward our workshop meeting, so we will just have one action meeting a month, generally the third Monday of each month, but that calendar is always on the website. And we have come up with some different procedures, more robust minutes to be shared amongst board members, to inform board members as to what's happening on committees on which they don't sit. So starting today, all of the meetings that already have been published on the website are the meetings for the year, and there will be one meeting a month. I think that covered it from retreat and goals. If the board doesn't have any questions about our goals, our district goals and our board governance goals, we will ask to approve those at the next board meeting. So between now and then, if there's any questions or comments, you know, feel free to reach out to Dr. Moore or myself, but in October, it will be on the agenda to approve those goals.
Can I add one thought? So Mrs. Hughes didn't mention in our work with Judy Wilson in our retreat was that she was very complimentary to the board in its high level of functioning, in the culture that it has to be collaborative, in just the level of attendance that we had throughout our retreat, and the level of investment that everybody had in those conversations. So I wanted to make sure that somebody mentioned and that we celebrated that tonight, that the board received quite a bit of compliment from our consultant.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, for bringing that up. And you'll see in our second board governance goal, we felt it was important to memorialize our board culture and what it means to be on the board and what the expectations are of board members at Hunterdon Central. So that is where a lot of these board governance goals came from. Does anybody have any other comments about retreat or goals? Nope. Okay, so with that, we will move into our second residence forum. This is now the time for general comments. As I indicated earlier, if anybody's interested in speaking, please come up to the mic, sign in, state your name and municipality for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Did I scare everybody away? Okay, if there's nobody, oh, sure.
My name is William Maroney. I live in township of Raritan.
Could you please sign in, Mr. Maroney? I think there's a piece of paper. Thank you.
There's not a pen here. Apologies for being a slow writer.
That's fine, take your time.
There was a brief reference earlier today about some changes in the early graduation practices, and I'm not sure if what I'm about to say now relates to that or not, so I apologize for not having more information. It's only something that's come to my attention fairly recently. And what we were told is that even if a student graduates, excuse me, has enough credits at the end of their 11th grade to meet all of the educational requirements that it would normally require, graduate at the end of 12th grade, that they could not graduate unless they, in addition to that, had 30 college credits. Maybe I misheard that because it seemed not to make any sense, like who could possibly meet those, that criteria unless it was an extremely rare situation. I guess it's a question, if it can be answered, is that correct? And is that consistent with the state requirements and the district's stated policy? Because I don't think it is.
Thank you, Mr. Maroney. We will get through public comment and then door and board comments. If Dr. Moore or another board member can answer that question, they will. Otherwise, we will get back to you with an answer on that.
That's great, thank you.
My name is Sandra Gong, and I'm short, so let's fix this a little bit. I'm a resident of Raritan Township, and I'm a taxpayer. My two daughters are in college and graduate school at this time, so they're not at the high school. And behind this mask, I am a person of color, so I'm glad that you're going to work on diversity for your board members, because it, to me, doesn't look actually that diverse. But given the earlier board meetings in the spring, I just wanted to make one comment. You know, sometimes the definition of a superhero is someone with extraordinary powers, and I'd like to add to that definition and include the school librarians. I read an article in the August 11 Hunterdon Democrat, and they featured Martha Hickson, a librarian at North Hunterdon, and she was awarded the Leminy Snicket Prize for Nobel Librarians Faced with Adversity. And she's standing against the book bullies who want to ban books from our school libraries. So think about it, a librarian gets an award for facing adversity. You might think a principal or a school board member should get an award for facing adversity, but a librarian? How sad is that, you know, that we have to actually do that or recognize our librarians? But I also say, how odd is that, that a librarian gets this award? And I also say, how cool is that, that a librarian gets this award? I applaud Ms. Hickson. If books on LGBTQ issues are banned, then what's next? Books about Black, Indigenous, or people of color? Did I mention that I'm a person of color? Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
I didn't go to school here, but both my parents did, and my family's been living in the area since the 30s. So I just want to thank the board and the school for making your high school an inclusive and safe environment, because I went to Somerville and I started the year of Columbine and ended the year of 9/11, so I had a rough high school career. In addition, I'm trans, didn't know until I was out of high school, because that wasn't a thing people talked about back then. So I just want to thank you all for making your school a safe and welcoming environment, because I might not have kids that go here, but I'm going to be living in society with the kids who graduate from this high school. Thank you.
Sorry for being a slow writer. Jason Cohen, Flemington. I also wanted to say thank you for being I also wanted to say thank you for being an inclusive school. I haven't -- I'm a junior, currently dating someone who is non-binary. I'm non-binary. And it's just, it's great to see that as much as I look around and see all the hate, all the distaste in the world, and sometimes in this school, I know that there are people like you guys up here who are standing up for what we're for, as you, Dr. Moore, are saying, what we're for. And I just really, it's been a big improvement for me seeing this since I was a sophomore. So I just want to say thank you. And yeah, I didn't have much, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Vivian Meyer from Ruddington Sending District, and I'm here on behalf of the --
Sign in.
Sign in. Sorry.
Thank you.
You were on a roll, too.
Sorry, this isn't quite my speed. I'm here as a representative from Pulse, Hunter and Central's Gender and Sexuality Alliance. We would like to thank the board for their continued effort at making this school a better and safer place for more LGBTQ students. Pulse's club members are grateful for the increase in asking for students' pronouns and preferred names at the start of the school year. However, gender-neutral bathrooms have made our club members feel safer during the school day. We know it's a problem. We know the promotion of these bathrooms can be, make them seem like a miss of class time to students who will abuse them. The problem is that most of these people who need to use these bathrooms don't know about them, because we can't promote them, because students will abuse them, and therefore can't access them. On behalf of Hunter and Central's Pulse Club, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vivian.
Can we hear me? I can. Can't tell. Awesome. My name is Arielle Almora. I stand before you tonight as a resident of Raritan Township, our beautiful community. I love it to death. I've lived here now almost two years with my wife and my two children. I'm a husband, a father of two. My two children attend Robert Hunter Elementary School. I'm a United States Marine Combat Veteran. I'm a law enforcement officer, and extremely proud to say that I am a founding member of the Hunterdon County NAACP Chapter, and I act as the treasurer. I would like to take this opportunity to share with you some facts that I believe that you may or may not know, some hard truths. What I'm about to read to you may be hard to understand or rationalize, but the fact of the matter is, is that it's pure unbiased data, highlighting where, as a community, as parents, and as Americans, we are failing our children. I don't want this to sound negative. I just wanted to put it in perspective for everyone. The New Jersey Division of Criminal Justice has compiled and released the following alarming data. Since 2015, reported bias incidents have increased at an alarming rate. Let me frame it for you so that we could put it into perspective. In 2015, we had 367 bias incidents reported. In 2016, 417. In 2017, 549. In 2018, 569. In 2019, 994. In 2020, we had 1,441. And in 2021, we had a total of 1,871 bias incidents reported. The data further shows that New Jersey children and young adults accounted for over half of the known offenders of bias incidents and nearly half of the victims. Additionally, 25% of all reported bias incidents occurred in grades K through 12 schools. The Youth Bias Task Force provided data illustrating the following. Students of color are disciplined and suspended at an alarming rate of 3.1 times more than their peers for the same exact infraction. Even worse is that the students of color, who are overrepresented in lower-level courses and underrepresented at higher-level courses, even while attaining a high standardized test scores, they are half as likely to be chosen for gifted and talented programs and 2.5 times less likely to be placed in AP classes. Now, I bring this to your attention so we could have a collaborative and a very constructive dialogue on what we could do better, both as faculty, as members of the board, as parents, because for me, I've seen the worst in humanity, and I've also seen the best. And all I know is that unity is better than separation, and we could do much better to bring our children together, unify all our children, okay, so we could have success, we can make a successful path for them. I also want to touch upon the LGBTQ plus community. I believe that we should be completely inclusive of everyone. Everyone should have a voice. Everyone should have a platform. Everyone should feel safe, both inside the school and outside the school. Is that my bell?
Still have a minute.
All right. Thank you so much. I wish I could keep on reading, but I can't, because I got my tone. I appreciate your time and consideration of what I've said, and I'll be more than happy to talk and discuss and have an open dialogue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Almora, and thank you for your service.
We good on time? Okay. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Moore. It's lovely to be here this evening. My name is Betsy Driver. I'm a resident of Flemington Borough. I'm also the mayor of Flemington Borough. My wife and I raised two kids that are proud graduates of Central. They've now gone off. One has grown and flown, one's a senior at Rutgers University. And the education they received here was welcoming, and it was diverse, and it included everybody. And that made them happy, and it made us, my wife and I, happy as parents. It was very important that that was, that they felt welcome at this community. So as, you know, I'm the first gay mayor, I think, of Flemington, at least the first out openly. I've also worked in for a couple of decades in the world of intersex advocacy, and that's the I in the LGBTQI. And for those who don't know, it's basically a variation of sex characteristics that differ from standard male or female. Horrible things happen to these kids as infants, but let's talk about when they get to high school. You know, they need to feel welcome. They need to feel heard. They need to just know that they are part of this community. And as, when you are, you know, include the diversity and inclusionary, that gives them a voice, it makes them feel heard, and that is the most important thing. And one of the things I often will speak to students who are thinking about going into politics or government, youth in government I've spoken to, I know there's a big chapter here, I think, at Hunter and Central as well, and I've spoken at their state conference. And kind of the speech I give is, tell your own story. Because if you don't tell your own story, somebody's going to tell that story on your behalf, and it may not be the story you like. And that's what's happening with some of these bullies who seek to ban books, who seek to ban pronouns that make people feel whole, and that's a shame. And it's not, and it just doesn't work. You know, in Flemington Borough, when I was first on council, I passed a resolution for the Recognizing Pride Month. It was the first time that ever came before council. I've been doing it every year since. In June, we try to do affinity days and months whenever possible. And then the past few years, we've also been trying to start a pride celebration here in Flemington, and it's growing. And to go to this, when we have, and it's usually a Friday night, at least it was this year, to see the families that show up, that are welcoming of our diversity and our diverse community. And when we listen to the bullies who try to shut down diversity, we are telling an entire community that they don't, that these kids and these adults and families like mine simply don't matter. So I thank you for your attention. I thank you for your support of diversity and inclusion in the curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Driver.
My name is Christina Wong. I have two students here at Central and one in the FRSD School District, and I'm a resident of the Raritan Township section of Flemington. I don't really have prepared remarks tonight, but I did kind of want to echo some of what's been said tonight. I thank you, Dr. Moore, for your thoughts. You kind of took what I was going to say already, so I won't repeat it. But I did want to, just for the record, state that there's real people involved with these policies and these questionnaires, and there's real-world consequences on how schools and communities choose to address and welcome the students that are in them. So I don't know if, you've had a chance to read it, but the Trevor Report came out, the Trevor Project came out with their 2022 Mental Health Report for LGBTQ youth. And so I just wanted to read a few statistics, since we are talking about kind of how these play out, like the other person spoke about in, you know, in real world. Forty-five percent, this is 2022, 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. Nearly 1 in 5 went on to attempt it. LGBTQ youth who felt support from their family reported attempting suicide at less than half that rate. And LGBTQ youth who found their school to be LGBTQ-affirming reported lower rates of attempting suicide. It says LGBTQ youth who live in a community that's accepting of LGBTQ, people reported significantly lower rates of attempting suicide than those who do not. Unfortunately, 60% of LGBTQ youth who wanted mental health care in the past year were not able to get it. So I just wanted to have that put on record, that why these questions matter when the teachers are asking the students who they want, like, want to be seen as, and who they are trying to figure out who they are. And that matters, to see them where they're at and meet them where they're at and value who they are in that moment, to be able to have a mentorship relationship with them and help shape their world, because so many of these students may not live in homes where that's accepted, and school may be the only place where they meet a teacher or another student that says, hey, who are you? I see you, and you have interesting thoughts and value. You know, so I just want to thank the board and the school for making the effort to create a school that is, you know, a place for everyone, and kind of leave some of that riffraff, you know, to be sorted out in the private sector, because, you know, goodness knows, these students are going to be in the private sector soon enough in real-world jobs where, you know, those personal, that value of who they are might not be reflected in, you know, by their employer or by whatever community they land in. And so in these formative years where they're trying to figure out, you know, who they are and where they fit in the world, I do think it's important that they are seen and valued and, you know, that they have a space to just be who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're approaching our 30-minute limit. We have time for one more speaker. If there's anyone interested in speaking, otherwise, we're going to wrap up public
Scott Cohen, Raritan Township, Dean of Students here at Hunter and Central Regional High School. And I just want to applaud our students coming out tonight for the courage and insightfulness in the challenges and struggles that they face every single day. I couldn't be more proud to be a member of the staff, working with the extraordinary talent in the school, and the foresight of this, our superintendent and the board, to look out to what is a necessary direction. This is despite what any state law says, despite what any policy that's written. It's just the right thing to do. And so I commend the board. I look forward to working with you continually on these fronts and efforts. The partnerships educating our students on the community relationships that they should be building in order to have a large safety net, both inclusive within the school grounds and externally, are vitally important. Their connection to the community and the way in which they engage will only further and enhance their leadership and individual development and growth as they move into positions outside of here, whether they pursue college or further education or not. All of them will hopefully end up in the employable workspace. And in the employable workspace, we know that diversity, equity, inclusion ranks extraordinarily high by most employers. So the fact that we're doing the legwork now and here and in this building will serve all of our students great benefit going forward. So continue the work. I look forward to working with you, the rest of the staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Okay. With that, we will conclude our second residence forum and move on to board comments. Does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, I can share a couple of, well, a couple of thoughts. First, I just thank you all for being here, and whether you spoke or not, you spoke. All right? And that's important. Your presence here is important. And I want to thank you for sharing what you're for. You know, I want to thank you for that. And to piggyback, Mr. Almora shared some thoughts from the Youth Bias Task Force report from 2020. I want to let you know that the work that we're doing across the county in schools is related to the findings in that report, and trying to figure out how schools can come together and share common measurements and common projects on that. So where our students here have, you know, when our students bravely come to the microphone and talk about the work that they're doing here and the challenges that they still face here as the work is never done, how powerful it would be for students across the county to have that platform together is something that we think about. And the more schools can be on the same page about how they're approaching those kinds of data, the more that that's possible for us. So just know that that work is happening among the schools in this district, and that your presence here and your thoughts about that help that work to continue, and not just here, but across the county, in districts across the county. So thank you for that. I do also, Mr. Maroni, there might be more, is Mr. Maroni still here? Yes, there might be more to discuss, but I do want to share that the state requirements for early graduation are indeed very strict and do indeed talk about a level of college credits that seems unattainable for high school students. We are working on that as a district. We have another kind of tradition here, but that is something that we're working on as a district. I don't know if you've been in touch, if you have a particular interest for a child in early graduation, if you've spoken with our counseling department or with Mrs. Candelisi Haye about it, you know, there's more, there's more to talk about there with all of us. Thank you. Thank you. And I think that's it. Thank you.
And I just want to make one comment. I just want to thank everyone who spoke tonight for following the rules, being respectful, courteous. I am encouraged and heartened that this is what this year's going to look like for us at all of our board meetings. So thank you all to the speakers who spoke from the heart, but were respectful to other people in the audience and folks around them. And we have nothing for executive session tonight. Is that correct? Okay, so I just need a motion to close out the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Is all in favors?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Good night, everyone.